All right, good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Gallup, president and CEO of the Rowlett Area Chamber and Visitor Center. And I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I know it's an unusual year with this many candidates and this many places running, but we're going to try to get through some questions tonight. We have picked an outstanding moderator for tonight's event. Most of you probably know Stephen Cozy. He is the business manager at Bolarama and Splits. And also, the city of Rowlett's most recent Richard Huff Award winner. That award's the highest award the city gives out to volunteers. So, he got that award for all of the stuff that he did during COVID and during the freeze and being a part of the co-ed and just, I could go on and on and on. He serves on my board of directors for the chamber as well. And so, we're happy to have Stephen here tonight. And Stephen will take time to let the candidates introduce themselves. So, without any further ado, we're going to go ahead and get started.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, well, first, I'm going to ask everyone to rise and state your name really quickly and the place that you're running for. And then, you can have a seat and tell us briefly, you can give your two-minute opening statement and ask or tell us why you're running for City Council of Rowlett. Mike, we'll start with you and then-
Good, I get to break the ice.
Yeah, and then, we're going to roll through, just like we did last week with Cindy, and we'll take turns being first. Mike?
Hey, good evening. Appreciate you all being here because this is what it's all about, citizens coming and asking question, or not you asking questions, but listening to us talk. My name is Mike Britton, and I'm running for council place four. Why am I running? There's a number of reasons why I'm running, but I'll try to be brief. I just want to give back to my, to my city. I want to, I want to see the city move forward in a very positive direction. I love our representative former government, and I want to make sure that as a representative former government, both myself and the people who work in our city have the first priority in mind, and that is to serve the needs of you because it is our community and it is our government.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Galawati. I've been in Rowlett for a little over 38 years, raised two kids here, put them through Rowlett High School, and then off to different University of Texas universities. And they're out on their own now, knock on wood that they stay that way. Why am I running? A misjudgment on my part? I'm not sure. It's a lot of work. I've had a lot of fun in the campaign. I do want to give back, as Mike said, and I think probably everybody up here is here for that reason. I spent a couple of years doing some volunteer time with some city boards the last few years. And while I was doing that, I saw some things that I thought I could improve. I know the council has a lot on their plate, and sometimes their priorities can be a little different than what we see should be the priorities. That's part of what's driving me. I think anyone who's looked at my candidacy knows Milleroe's a big priority for me. I'd like to get that started. I've heard talk for a long, long, long time, probably since I got here, that it needs, something needs to be done. And my position is if we don't start it, nobody else will, so we need to start it. There are a few other things. A lot of that is on my campaign website, brianforrowlett.com. I encourage you to go there and have a look at that. You'll find out a lot more about me than just me standing up here. But if you want to know the truth, you can talk to my wife, who's sitting over here. She knows all about me, and she's been married for almost 41 years. So, thank you.
My name is Stephanie Higgins, running for city council place one. I've been a resident here in Rowlett for about two years. So, I'm relatively new, but a lot of the things that I've seen and a lot of different people that I've gotten to talk to in the two years that I've lived here, you know, I just really love the community here. Great involvement with other people and sharing, you know, different problems that they're having and trying to come up with really good solutions, and I really like that. I like being really involved in that kind of stuff. A lot of the different things that I've done in the two years that I've been here is, a lot of people know me for the trails behind the lakefront homes. That was probably one of the more public things that I did. I also helped a lot of different people on the issue with gas stations at Cheez-It and Miller. I currently have started a chapter called Heroes on the Water, and it is for first responders and veterans. We take them out fishing to kind of relieve some of that PTSD, get some more of that camaraderie, and, you know, people to talk to. And there's a few things that I'd like to try to implement on the lake, whether or not I'm going to be on council or just as a citizen. Definitely, lake safety. I know we've had a lot of drownings and issues going on in the lake, and I think that's kind of a really big thing that I'd like to try to take on, as well as implementing the water trail. So, Dave with Kayak Shop, actually, I've been working with him pretty closely in the last two years that I've been here, and we're wanting to make it a little more, you know, Rowlett's on the water, on the move. And so, we're actually trying to implement that a little more, get the kayakers and, you know, people that want to canoe and paddleboard all around the lake, good entry points for them, you know, where they can put in and put out, and maybe have some areas where we'll have vendor trucks, you know, come in for food and just make it more of a community lake area. But that's kind of like my goal, and, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more, ooh, that's it, a little bit more efficiency, but that's it.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Day, and I'm running for seat six. I am a loving wife, a mother of two boys that are in the Air Force Police. I have lived in Rowlett for about five years. And when I first came to Rowlett, when my husband and I got relocated with my job of 23 years with AT&amp;T, we were looking for something just outside of the Dallas suburbs that we could call home. When we came to Rowlett, we were excited to see all the plans that were coming into fruition with the Sapphire Bay, and we're excited for that for the future. And we were also excited to be able to go down the Main Street and get that hometown feel. And we knew that it was home as soon as we were going down that Main Street, and we selected our home here in Rowlett. I'm running because I am truly a servant leader, selfless leader, and I want to put service before self. I've done a lot of volunteering in the community already, getting to know the community. I did Citizens Class Five Academy. I've also done Police Academy. I've done a lot of volunteering. I've gotten involved a little bit with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board today, and I've done tons of volunteering for them. I just love being able to be a part of Rowlett and the programs that it have. I want to see that Rowlett grows and continues to create the great programs that it has for its citizens, and that the infrastructure can actually build to the way that it needs for our citizens, so that our city will be the beautiful destination city that we want it to be in the future. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jeff Winchett. I'm running for city council place two. Interestingly enough, I am actually unopposed in my place. And so, you might be asking, why are you here tonight? Why are you talking to us? And there's actually two reasons for that. The first is I want to get my, get to know my future coworkers and also to help them get to know me a little bit better. And the second is I want to set a precedent that no matter what the situation is, all of our council members are engaged, ready to communicate, ready to be a part of what's going on, ready to talk to you and answer the tough questions. We don't need to hide behind anything. We don't need to shy away from that. My motivation for running for council is the same as it was in 2017, and that's to improve citizen communication, to improve the bond between our residents and, and the leaders that are, you know, operating in our community, and to recognize that our position here is really to serve the residents of this city. I want to take the rest of my time to actually thank all of you that are here, because if you look around this room, there are not 70-some-odd-thousand people in this room. You guys are an elite group. And so, it's extra important that you spread the word among your community members and among your friends, in your church, in your other organizations, that it is so important to vote on a local level. It is so important. And I highly encourage you to, again, spread the word, let people know what's going on in our city, because local politics is one of the strongest type of politics, and you are an elite group here. The vote that you make at the ballot is representing 10 or 15 other people. You're spending 10 or 15 other people's property taxes when you vote at the ballot. You may not realize that, but that's the truth. We only have a voter turnout of less than 10%. So, again, I would just encourage you to continue to spread the word. Thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Hello, Rowlett. I'm Deb Schinder, and I'm running for city council place six. Unlike Jeff over there, I'm not running unopposed, but as I've said from the very beginning, when I announced my candidacy back in August, I'm also not running against anyone. I'm running for the city of Rowlett and for the citizens of this city. I'm a fourth-generation Texan. I've lived in the DFW area for more decades than I care to admit. 18 of those years, I've lived in Rowlett, and I love this city very much. I'm a voracious reader. I'm a lifelong learner. I'm a very proud Navy mom. And I'm running for city council because city government and public service run in my family. I have a little lapel button on here today, and this D does not stand for Deb. It stands for Dallas. And it's my good luck charm because my dad retired from the city of Dallas, and he was awarded this pin for his 30 years of service. So, there are a lot of things that I want to do as a member of the city council. I want to represent the people and give you not just a vote, but a voice at City Hall. I think that a lot of people feel as if they've been left out or been shut out of local government, and not just in Rowlett, but that's common everywhere. I want to be someone that you can talk to, someone who'll listen, someone who'll take action when appropriate and possible, and someone who will care about your concerns. I've served on the city council before. That was a long time ago, and I was not quite as young as Blake back then, but I was one of the youngest people to be elected to that particular city. And I guess my time's up, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Lanning, and I'm running for council member place four. 20 years ago, and I've been here for 23 years, 20 years ago, I started the Rowlett Citizen Core Council. You may better know it as CERT or Fire Core Rehab. That program has grown to over 325 volunteers doing 26,000 service hours a year. It's a great program within the city. 10 years ago, I decided to become more involved with the city and start getting on boards and commissions. So, I've served on a whole number of different boards and commissions several times and done very well with that. Five years ago, I decided I wanted to be more involved and became the chair of the Chamber of Commerce. At that point, I was successful at rebuilding the Chamber of Commerce and setting it in a new direction on a path that led to a four-star accreditation recently. Those are all points during my lifetime where I've been able to make Rowlett a better place to live, and that's my reason for running for council again, is I want to make it a better place for all of us.
All right, thanks, everyone. So, we're going to start with Brian now, and I'm going to send the next five questions or so, we're going to be really about personal questions, what qualifies you to be a council or those types of things. So, some of them, you may find yourselves repeating yourselves from what you've already said. If so, we'll burn through this pretty quickly. The next question is simply, what makes you proud to be a Rowlett citizen?
What makes me proud to be a Rowlett citizen? Well, I think probably the first thing is that the, the people who show up here, and I see very, very many familiar faces that have committed themselves, a number of other things. It has, to my view, always been a great place to raise a family. My kids, as I mentioned before, went through Herford Elementary, Rowlett Elementary, Coyle Middle School, Rowlett High School. The communities there were always supportive of the kids. They're still supportive of the kids. And I know Garland runs the school system, and kudos to them. They do an excellent job, I think. My kids have been out for a while, so I don't have firsthand knowledge of the last 10 years or so, but I believe they still are doing an excellent job. What else can I say? The, I love the small-town atmosphere. I'd love to see us have more events in Main Street. I'm really looking forward to when Sapphire Bay opens and being able to stay and do our entertainment here. I find myself too often going out somewhere else to, you know, hear the live music and that kind of thing. So, I'd like to make it better in that way. I am a musician, by the way, and I'm very envious of the setup they have here. Yeah, my neighbor knows that. I have less than one minute left. I think, again, it's the people here. You guys participate. I mean, we've got a great group of people here who want to serve Rowlett. That's what makes Rowlett great. Thank you.
What makes me proud to come to Rowlett? So, I've lived in the DFW Metroplex my entire life. We always used to come out to the lake. My dad used to take me fishing all the time. I was going kayaking when Kayak Dave still had the storage unit over there. Just a little cargo thing that was sitting on the side. There was no store, nothing like that. You know, it was still very small. I loved to come out and kayak and fish. I was bartending in the harbor in Rockwall a lot, so in and out of, of the lake area and Rowlett was a lot of fun. And, you know, I kind of saw myself coming here at some point, and then I met my fiance, and we ended up building a house here. And I think it's definitely a wonderful place, and the, the longer that I've lived here, the more that I've gotten to meet other people, and I'm just really enjoying the relationships that I've been building in the short two years that I've been here. We're planning on raising our family here and retiring here, and I'm super excited to see a lot of the growth that's going to be happening with the Sapphire Bay and the different things that it's going to be bringing in. And, you know, I would just like to see us grow and have a really strong foundation to sustain all of that growth. And I'm just super proud of a lot of the decisions that have been made so far in regards to that.
I'm proud because of all of you. When I first moved here to Rowlett, I felt like I was receiving a warm handshake, a nice smile from each one of the residents that I was meeting. My neighbors made me feel so at home. I felt like during the last cold storm that I was safe because I had neighbors watching after me, and I was watching after them. I'm proud of the citizens of here, here in Rowlett, and I'm proud to be part of those, the citizenship here in Rowlett. I'm also proud of what a beautiful city we have, the lake destination, the beautiful entry points that we have coming in and out of the city, passing over the lake. I love it. Every time I pass over the bridge, I'm like, I'm going to go home. It's all, I love the city, and I love the way that our, our city government has done a good job keeping things clean. And with the partnership of Keep Rowlett Beautiful, they've done a wonderful job. I'm also proud of all of the hometown feeling that we get with the, the programs that are done on Main Street through the Parks and Rec Department. I'm proud of what's to come, our Fourth of July. I'm so proud of what we've done with the Fourth of July and the beautiful event that it's, it is and will continue to be. I love that we have a parade every year. There's not many hometowns that have a parade anymore, or they're shutting down. So, I'm excited that we still have this for our residents and will continue to have this. So, these are the reasons why I'm proud of Rowlett. Thank you all for making me proud.
Well, I'm proud to be a Rowlett resident for a few reasons. Number one is the helpers. No matter where you look, there is so many organizations and people that are volunteering within our community, from the Friends of the Rowlett Animal Shelter, to Keep Rowlett Beautiful, to all of our boards and commissions, to CERT. I mean, all of these organizations, VIPS, all of these organizations are made up of people, and those are all people that have a deep passion for our community. And that brings me to my second reason, which is passion. There are so many people that are passionate about our community. You've probably been to a couple of city council meetings where there have been some tempers flared, and there have been some very passionate speeches and emotional appeals to council to vote a particular way. And that passion is, is a love for the community, which is really my third point, which is the community itself. We moved to Rowlett in 2014, and we moved here for a variety of reasons, but we wanted to make Rowlett a home. And it was going to be a home until my kids were basically gone to college. And my youngest is seven, so I'm, I'm pretty in. I'm pretty committed. I'm not going anywhere. So, it's that community, those helpers, and, and that passion that I love about Rowlett. Thank you.
I am proud to be a Rowlett citizen, and I'm not only proud, I'm blessed to be a Rowlett citizen. This city is, as others have said, such a beautiful place. We have what Realtors tell us is the most important thing, location, location, location. We're here on the lake. We have the potential to become a real destination city, and I'm proud of our past leaders who have seen that potential and who have set those wheels in motion for us to become a place in the Metroplex that other people come to, to bring in visitors and to, for our own citizens to enjoy. I'm proud to, of the people, of course, the people here in Rowlett, and the way that the people come together whenever we have some sort of a problem or some sort of adversity. The tornado was something that affected those of us who were here then so dramatically. And my husband and I were, you know, we were in our closet, our safe room, when the tornado went over, and we came out of that safe room, and we, we looked outside, and our house was still there. So, you know, we were, we were happy. And the next morning, we got up and we looked across the lake at the homes on Windjammer and at the homes in the, the other development right across the lake from us, and we saw that some of those homes were flattened. They were down to the slab, and it was just, it was an incredible thing. But what was even more incredible was the way that the people came together and helped one another, looked out for one another, offered to put people's food in, in their own freezers if they were out of power, offered to give people a place to stay. It was just an amazing thing that showed me that the people of Rowlett are a special group of people.
Two things come to my mind immediately when we talk about things that we're proud of or we're happy with here in the city. First is volunteers. I'm a lifelong volunteer, and I can tell you that volunteers in our city are woven into the fabric of our community. If we looked at the number of volunteer hours in one year, it'd be over 100,000 volunteer hours community-wide in all of the different nonprofits that we have. That sets us apart from virtually every other community that we have in the Metroplex. The second thing that I'm very proud of is our city staff. They work very, very, very diligently and hard to make sure that your water comes out of your faucet, your sewer goes down the drain, and that your tires don't get popped when you rode, when you ride down the road. You know, they, they're not flawless, but they try extremely hard. They do really good work, and they're often out there at 3:00 in the morning doing things that you would not want to do. What I didn't mention a while ago is that we've been here about four years. October will be four years. But we've kind of had an association with this city for at least eight or more years because our daughter and our son-in-law and our grandkids live here. And I'm proud of Rowlett for a number of reasons. I'm proud of Rowlett because of the, of the great neighborhoods that are in this city. And there's no disrespect to your neighborhood, but I'm from the best neighborhood, Toller Bay, in the best city in the Metroplex, in the best state in the Union, and the best country that this world has ever seen. So, I'm very proud of that. We, both my wife and I grew up in West Texas, far West Texas. And so, after high school, I went in the Marine Corps, and I served for 20 years. And then, when we got married, after I was in the Marine Corps for a couple of years, we moved almost every year, year and a half to someplace new. And it kind of carried over to that when I got out of the Marine Corps after my 20 years. We were in DC, we were in Colorado, we were in different places. Finally, came back to the Metroplex a little over 20 years ago. And we've always been searching for that community that we could sink some roots down into. We lived in Allen almost 20 years, and Allen was not that community, although we loved Allen, but it was not that community where we felt like we could just really sink some roots into. This place is a great place. Deb's already alluded to it. How you came together after the tornado, and we came over here right after to see what we could do to help out our, our kids' church and whatever they were doing to relieve the pain and suffering, and across all kinds of lines, church, non-church, all walks of life, you came together for one common good and one common bond, and that is to relieve the suffering that was going on then. And I, I think that's just a great compliment to this city that can do something like that. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to put these next two questions together because we're moving rather slowly. Not anyone's fault, just a lot of, a lot of questions and a lot of people here. So, the next question is twofold. Describe the relationships you've built with other area leaders and entities that will enable you to represent Rowlett in regional matters, and what actions you have taken over the last three years to prepare yourself to be a Rowlett city council representative.
As far as, like I said, the last three years, I've only been here for two years. So, I guess a lot of it's going to have to do with the, the knowledge base as far as like making those connections and things like that, is have a knowledge base of the city. In the two years that I've been here, I've made, you know, a few connections within Rowlett, only on the city staff. I think at that point, I guess, me being only here for two years, I haven't met a whole lot of higher entities or things like that to make those connections. But I do think the longer that I am here and the more that I'm involved in the city, I do plan on making a lot more of those connections and things like that, and educating myself as well as educating the other citizens as I can help out.
Some of the connections that I've made in the city come from all of the different areas that I've volunteered in or been a part of, starting with the, the academy, the Citizens Academy, Class Five. I made a lot of connections there and really got to know the city. And they, they go through all the different areas of the city in the academy and really take you in depth, so that you get a really good broad base of what each department does. You also meet all of those department leaders, and you understand what their challenges are and what they're trying to do within the city. So, that was where I really started. But then, I went on and I learned about the Citizens Police Academy. I got to know our police academy a little bit more, got to actually do the obstacle course drill that the police department does, and also learned a lot about the challenges that they have and what they're trying to do to support our city in all different manners. I, I also met J.J. Jones whenever I was involved with Citizens Police Academy, and you got to use my business and analytical skills to help him stand up a database to help do some numbers, so that he can present what his call volumes were and get him on a repeatable path. But that was the way that I could give back as a volunteer entity there. Then also, getting involved with the boards and getting to know all the people at the events downtown and the programs, just to hear what citizens are, are interested in and what they're curious about and what they'd like to see different in the city. And this is how I got involved more, just by showing up and being places and having a listening ear for people to be able to share with me their stories and what they would like to see in the city going forward.
So, regionally is, is a little bit difficult because a lot of us have not been on council and been able to form some of those regional connections. So, most of the regional connections I have are more of just type of, of a type of acquaintance. So, I, for instance, I just had coffee with the Rockwall County Treasurer the other day. I've been very familiar with Mr. Larry Glick, who serves on the GIST board. You know, knowing other council members from Garland and Saxon, for example, those are a couple of the connections that, that I personally have made. And then, within the community, preparing to serve in this capacity, I have served on the Arts and Humanities Commission since 2015. I've been chair for three of those years. I've also served as, on the Strategic Plan Steering Committee back in 2018, I believe, and then most recently, served as chair of the Charter Review Commission here in 2020. So, I believe all of those positions have built me up and equipped me to become more familiar with what goes on in the city, more cognizant of how our city operates, and just functionally more prepared to be on council. Thank you.
So, in terms of connections within the city, I have been involved, have gone to all the city council meetings since last June, have met many, many people through that, have met most of the city staff- that, have met most of the city staff and they know me very well by now. Having served on the Charter Commission, the Bond Committee, the Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission now, um, I've also made many connections there with developers and so forth. But in terms of regional connections, which I think was actually the gist of this question, having been on the Sequaville City Council, I made many connections there because I went to many of the state and regional meetings, uh, TML, and you'd be surprised how many of the people way back then who were involved in, in our state and regional governments are still there and how many of them, um, still are in those positions. So I know those, uh, having also taught at North Central Texas Council of Governments, Regional Police Academy, um, I made many connections there in the law enforcement space within the, within the DFW area. I even trained some recruits who went on to become chiefs in their department. So I have those connections. I served on Eastfield College's, uh, Criminal Justice Training Board, Advisory Board, and met again many chiefs and also many community leaders such as council members from Askeet and from other, uh, from Rockwall and other cities around here. Um, and I've gotten to know many of the county commissioners. I know some of our state reps or former state reps, Cindy Burkett, who was here last week for the mayor's forum. And so also in the Chamber of Commerce, um, having gone to all those chamber meetings over the last many months, I have met a lot of people there. So my time's up again, so.
Uh, most recently, I attended a meeting of the Tri-Cities Coalition, which is all of the cities that are involved in Garland School District. I believe that will be very profitable connection that we have for the city. Uh, a very strong, uh, regional connection I have is with the North Central Texas Council of Governments, uh, specifically with the Emergency Preparedness Department. I sit on, uh, as an alternate on the Emergency Planning and Preparedness Council. And I'm also the first vice chair of another work group that they have there. So, uh, I was also instrumental in making sure that we bought into a new radar system to help keep our city a lot safer. So, uh, those are some connections there. And I also feel that it's very strong or very important for council members, uh, to have continuing education. And so we're fortunate to be able to take advantage of the Texas Municipal League. And I was recently, uh, recognized by them for my efforts with continuing education over this past year.
Well, uh, with the exception of Stephanie, uh, who's been here two years and I've been here four years, I haven't had an awful lot of opportunities. And as Jeff also said, you know, not being on the council, you don't get a lot of opportunities to interact with people that work in our city or our city government. Uh, but I will tell you that shortly after we moved here, uh, in 2018, uh, one of the first things I wanted to do is to become part, uh, part of the Rowlett Citizens Academy. I attended that and I believe that gave me a really good perspective, uh, if nothing else, a 20,000 or 30,000 view perspective of how the city operates, what are the key departments and how they interact with each other. I, uh, wanted to go ahead and be part of a commissioner board, but we had this thing called the pandemic start. And then that kind of threw a wrench into things and then my job took a little bit different direction, not making excuses, because I do believe that commissions and boards are a vital part, uh, of the city. But I took a little bit different direction since we couldn't do, since I couldn't do some of that other stuff. I volunteered within my church here and particularly not just inside the church, but outside the walls of the church. We do a lot for Pearson and Coil. And I'm also, uh, involved in a group called Men of Honor and Ladies of Honor. And Men of Honor, I work with high school students over at Rowlett High School. And it's, is it the same as the city? No, but it's pouring investment in a different direction, trying to be a mentor, trying to, trying to help young men understand what real manhood is all about. Thank you.
I'm going to break with the new tradition and stand up still because I like to do that. Um, it's funny, Jeff should mention Larry Glick. Um, when my wife and I decided to build our second house here, Larry was chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We bought our property meets and bounds, and so we had to learn how the development process worked in Rowlett. And that meant going in front of Larry and the Planning and Zoning Board and building our subdivision of one lot. Um, proud to have that here. We left our mark on Rowlett forever. It's now registered with the county. Um, I'm fundamentally a troublemaker, which means I'm a change maker. Um, a few years ago, I met a lot more people than I had intended to meet when I got involved in the water petition. Um, I had seen a post on Facebook from, uh, Councilman Margolis and thought I could do something here. So I started a petition. In two weeks, we had, I don't know, two, over 2,000 signatures on that thing. Um, I was picking my granddaughter up. It was in the middle of the pandemic. I was picking her up in Prosper and I got a call on my phone from someone that said, "It may be Tammy Dana Bashin." I said, "Oh, I'm in trouble." Uh, and so began the, the episode that lasted from January 2020 until October of 2020, where I spent a lot of my time interacting, uh, through correspondence with state representatives, with state senators, uh, with the Public Utility Commission, with Tammy, with Brian Thunderburg, um, and, and carrying that, uh, project to fruition. The last couple of years, I was on Charter Review Commission with Jeff. He did a good job on there, I will say. Um, I ended up chairing the Community Investment Advisory Board. Boy, you've got to know the city staff and city departments to be able to carry that thing through. So I have less than 30 seconds left. Um, you know, an important thing to know the city is to know the city's finances. I learned that at the Federal Reserve when I went in the accounting department. You don't learn an organization until you know how the accounting system works and where the money goes. It's an important factor.
All right. Thank you. Let's see if we can do this one really quickly and then we'll jump into the city questions. Briefly summarize your top two to three policy priorities. Rebecca, we'll start with you.
My three top priorities issues and policies will be, first, I want to listen to the citizens' input. Then I want to assess programs that will help establish that input and, and see if we can support those citizens. And then three, measure those against the city. These three priorities are actually the priorities that are set within the Texas Municipal Handbook for council members. I'm hoping that all council members and our mayor will have those priorities as well.
Um, so really two, two main priorities, I would say, and the first being infrastructure. From a focus standpoint, we need to, as a city, focus a lot of energy and finances into our infrastructure, make improvements. The cities to our east are not going to stop growing. And so long as that happens, Miller Road, uh, Lakeview Parkway and I-30 are going to continue to be a bottleneck. Now fortunately, we have Tech Dot on our side helping with I-30, um, with service roads and things like that. But I think we all know that anytime there's an accident, where, where does the traffic go? It goes to 66 and it goes to Miller. Um, so we are need, going to need to continue to focus and strategize, uh, on how we are going to overcome those infrastructure challenges. The second one is public safety. Um, we need to, as a community, also, uh, put a ton of energy into public safety, in particular our police department. We need to overcome some of the challenges that we faced over the past 12 months, um, and from my understanding, possibly longer. But we definitely need to, uh, accomplish a goal of getting our police department squared back up, firm back up, and overcome the challenges that we're facing. And I don't want to leave out our fire department, our public, uh, public work teams, public works team as well, apologies. Um, those are both very crucial organizations to our community and we need to continue to, um, lift them up and encourage and, uh, be a part of their success. Thank you.
Well, Jeff stole some of my priorities there. My first priority would encompass two of his, and that is to prioritize and to focus on supporting the essential services of government. I came up back in 2009, when I was on the Bond Committee, with something that I called the municipal hierarchy of needs. And that was, that was based on or modeled on, um, Abraham Maslow's individual hierarchy of needs or hierarchy of individual needs. And in my model, the, uh, in my model, the essential services of government, which include public safety, uh, both police and fire, EMT, even animal control, and, uh, infrastructure, roads, public works, uh, those departments are the ones that I feel should be at the base of the pyramid. Because without good infrastructure, the other essential services can't really operate. The police and fire department need good roads to be able to get to their calls for service. So this is a really big priority for me. Um, another priority is to bring more transparency and more citizen involvement into all of our city processes and help to get the citizens more involved. I'm so glad to see so many citizens getting more involved in this election. And I want to, I want to see that happen to a greater extent. And this time, I'm not going to go over my time, so I'm going to cut it off right there. Thank you.
My three priorities are similar to, to what has been spoken already, but, uh, I want to make sure that we are investing in our infrastructure, uh, to the tune of between 30 and 40 million every three years, uh, given the bond cycle. That is the minimum that we need to be able to invest in that to just keep the good roads good. That does not include any funding for, uh, the estimated Miller Road, which is 50 million, or even the Merritt Road Connector, which is currently at 30 million. So there's still a lot of investment that, that needs to happen, uh, in the infrastructure to really make that great. Second is to, uh, fully fund public safety. Uh, that includes police, fire and public works because they are, uh, first responders. Uh, we need to give them the equipment that they need to be successful. When you dial 911, you expect to have a, uh, piece of apparatus, whatever that may be, uh, at your door within five to six minutes. So we need to fully fund that so that that happens. Third is economic development. Uh, in the past, I feel that we've been a little lax in the way that we've done marketing to tell, uh, other cities that we're open and even go after specific developers. And so I would be an advocate of, uh, increasing their budget significantly so that we would be able to do more marketing and tell Texas that we're open for business.
And it's not going to be a shocker, but I agree with a lot of things that these people have been saying because my three main priorities are essential services, police. We've got to have the best police officers that we possibly can, not only attract the best, but do whatever we can to retain the best. We've got some issues that, that's been alluded to. Without going into those, we need to fix those because we've got, we've got a morale problem in our, in our police department here. This city is, uh, growing every year. We will probably tap out somewhere around 100,000 people and it's essential that we have the best public safety, not just police, but fire and first responders as, as much as possible. Infrastructure is another biggie, biggie with me. And it's a very complex issue because it takes an awful lot of money, but that has to be a priority as well. As we get more people in here and as with our roads are continuing to get beat on, we've got to take a priority with whatever dollars we can get and make sure we're not only maintaining, but trying to do some expansion where, where possible. I guess my last thing would be what I would call an essential framework of our city. I believe our city has a perception, and perceptions are truth unless otherwise proven different, that we have a perception of being a, not a business-friendly city. We need to do whatever we can to attract businesses, especially local businesses. We obviously are going to have compliance. We need to have codes, but we need to also be flexible and we need to do whatever we can to be a, an attraction instead of, uh, repulsing some of the people from coming in here and working in this city. Thank you.
Again, the troublemaker. I'll stand up again. So I think you're hearing the theme. I think all of the candidates agree, public safety, essential services, transportation. Um, I'm glad to hear Whitney talk about economic development because to do all those things, we need to pay for them. And we don't want to do it on the backs of the citizens if we can help it. And economic development is the engine that gets us there. Uh, those of you who've seen my video or looked at my website know I'm a great proponent of trying to focus on bringing in additional commercial development where we have the opportunity. Much of the funding out of Sapphire Bay is committed to Sapphire Bay for a lengthy period of time. And then after that, half the funding, uh, for some of the taxes goes to the City of Dallas as part of the purchase agreement. Um, we need to focus on the things we can do to draw in money from outside of Rowlett and not rely simply on the tax base of the rooftops here. What do we do to do that? The North Shore is a start. I had someone ask me the other day what I thought about the industrial district up there. Uh, if I had been at that meeting, we'd still be sitting at the meeting because I'd be sitting on the fence. It is a real hard call. Um, I apologize to those in Homestead that, that thought they were going to get, um, a different kind of development there and they may yet. There is another step in this process and I have some ideas around that that I'll be releasing soon. How do we get the money in? I think, uh, Whitney alluded to it. Uh, we've been somewhat in a, you know, come and visit us kind of mode for our economic development and that's not how it works. We need to go out, we need to find the Lincoln Properties. We need to go out and find the, uh, Blue Star Development. We need to go find the folks that are willing to go in here and invest in a 200 or 300 acre development in the North Shore, make our property owners happy, make their neighbors happy and put in a first-class development up there that people from outside of Rowlett will come to visit and spend their money here, not just us spending our money here. Thank you.
Um, wow, you know, it seems like a, a lot of the candidates are on repeat on the first two. It's the foundation. We really got to build up our foundation. We've got, you know, police and safety, infrastructure, especially with all of the, uh, growth. And our growth right now is, it's inevitable. It's coming. Um, we don't need to just maintain, we need to increase, um, the police safety, we need to increase the roads, you know, get it up to where we're not dropping every year, um, on our, uh, on our rating for our roads and our utilities. Um, I think that's probably just the, the number two things for me, um, because if we don't have the foundation there, we can't sustain the overall growth. Um, as far as number three, uh, you know, I agree, I agree with both, uh, Mike and Brian on that. We've got to get some businesses in here and also keep our businesses that are still here. Um, you know, some of the businesses around here are struggling, I guess, with some communication issues. Um, they're also, um, you know, wanting a little bit more people to come in and, like I said, to visit, but we want more people to stay. Definitely keeping the businesses here and bringing in new businesses, uh, is definitely key. And like I said, taking the tax burden off of everyone else and putting it on to the new businesses coming in.
All right. Thanks, everyone. At this point, we're going to jump over to the city-based questions and Jeff will start with you. This one is very fresh on everyone's mind and it has to do with Jackson Shaw, as was just mentioned. Last week, Jackson Shaw received their zoning request from the city council to build warehouses in the North Shore District. What is your stance on this and if elected, how will, well, you will be elected, how will you support the Jackson Shaw development?
So this is, it's unfortunate, I'm the first person to answer. This is a tough question. You know, there, there's a lot of things that Jackson Shaw will allow us to do for the community from a financial standpoint. There's a lot of benefit to that development. However, it is not what I think was envisioned for North Shore originally. Now, from what was originally envisioned, there have been a ton of changes. Commercial real estate is not what it once was as a result of the pandemic. Retail, big box stores, um, those have suffered. But that's not to say we couldn't have done some type of entertainment district or something else in the North Shore. However, we, we are at this point now and what we have to do going forward is to make the best of this development that we possibly can. I am all ears for what Brian has to recommend. Uh, whether or not he is elected to council, I hope he will share those thoughts with us because I would love to know what concepts or ideas, uh, the community has for what we can do with Jackson Shaw. Um, what was approved last Tuesday is an initial step. There are many more steps that have yet to be taken. And, uh, it's going to be very important that we get community feedback, get community input. And those of you who were at that, that, both the, uh, planning and zoning meeting as well as the council meeting spoke, made your voices heard. I would highly encourage you to continue to make your voices heard. Um, we, we are a council who is representative of you as residents and it's very important that we hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Well, everyone else on this dais other than Whitney can say hypothetically how they would have voted on the Jackson Shaw issue. As a member of P and Z, I did vote on that issue. When Jackson When Jackson Shaw came to present their presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had a lot of questions, and we had a lot of citizen participation, and we had a lot of input from the people in the Homestead neighborhood. And they made some extremely good points about some of the impacts on their neighborhood if the warehouses that were being proposed actually went in there. We on P&amp;Z felt that we didn't have enough information at that time to make or to grant that request. And so I attempted to make a motion to table the matter. That failed, and I then made a motion to deny the request at that time, and that did pass with a three-to-two vote. Now, the city council has approved the rezoning, and as Jeff said, it's only a rezoning at this point in time. The council going forward will have a lot of controls, P&amp;Z and council, will have a lot of controls over what actually happens there. Also, as Jeff said, I believe the more that I look at the comprehensive plan, the less I think that the proposal is really in sync with that comp plan. Now, that doesn't mean that the comp plan can't be changed, but in my opinion, changing the comp plan should be something that we look at first and then look at the zoning issues. So for that reason, my stance at this point in time is that I support the council's right to make the decision that they made, and I also stand by the decision that I made on P&amp;Z.
I do stand by my vote to approve the zoning change for Jackson Shaw. That is only, as the other folks here have alluded to, the first step. There are many steps in this process, many control points, many areas that will allow council and P&amp;Z to be able to control not only the types of businesses that Jackson Shaw brings in, but the impacts that they will have on the community. By no means is this the last fight that is there. I see that coming, and I would certainly encourage you to keep sending letters in, to keep speaking before the council, because that's the only way that we hear input. It is extremely important during these times and especially for these types of issues that we hear from you. When we don't hear from you and you're silent, then we don't know where you stand. And it's extremely important when we represent all of the citizens, all 73,000 of them, that we hear from you. So I would encourage you to keep doing that.
You know, it's always easy to be a Monday morning quarterback and second-guess why someone did what they did. And I will approach this, just like I've approached other questions that's been posed to me, how will I vote on this or you fill in the blank? And I always answer that, I've got to be on the council first and be able to listen to all the facts, all the details that's being presented in a proposal, and then logically, methodically, with a lot of scrutiny, go over that before I make a vote. For me to make a vote or tell people how I'm going to vote or how I would have voted without having all the details, I think it's a little disingenuous on my part. I do agree with Brian here. I'm kind of on the fence on that one. I don't know that the citizens of Liberty Grove and Homestead were heard in a loud voice. I know there's a lot of people that's come up to me and asked me what I would thought. And I think the input of the citizens is crucial. Again, I don't have all the facts on why they reached for a decision. Putting myself in that situation, I might have preferred to like to table it and get a little bit more information, maybe get a little bit more input from the citizens because I didn't get one single email or call to say, I'm for it, would you have supported it? So, thank you.
There you go, standing again. Yeah, I like to stretch. That's what I'm doing. You're right. I'm old, I got to get up now and again. Why am I on the fence? And one correction, so what was approved was actually a zoning change and a concept plan. The concept plan, I think, is where we have some opportunity and I think where I have some ideas. What they laid out, what Jackson Shaw laid out is a nice big warehouse development with a mix of kind of warehouse operations and called light industrial manufacturing-type operations with shipping and receiving and that kind of thing. And then a little small area next to the new merit interconnector that is going to go through the middle of that development that is reserved for future retail. I went back and looked at the comprehensive plan, and what I saw in the comprehensive plan is that there's a short distance on either side of that merit interconnector that was intended to be that kind of retail strip center that I'm here, Jackson Shaw, referring to. That is one of the things that I think the council and I think this next step really goes to between Jackson Shaw and the staff when they work on the planning, but I think council can get involved if they want to, and I would plan to, to try to drive that section of this development to more of that retail that the original comprehensive plan had in that area. There are other things that are going on out there. They asked for some, they talked about some variances on building heights, lighting heights, things like that. They also talked about, and I went to one of the Jackson Shaw meetings and asked them specifically what they were asking for in incentives. And they are asking for incentives. We don't know what they are yet because those are discussed in executive session, except for what Jackson Shaw mentioned. They want us to pay for the traffic lights and that section of merit road through tax rebates. Well, my thought is we need to balance that. And quickly, my idea for how we try to get what the Homestead folks want is I want them involved in this next step. I would like to get an association, I'm going to say, burn my time a little bit here. I would like to set up an association from Homestead to work with the city on those major warrants and try to get this to meet their needs as well as the city needs.
You know, I'm going to kind of go with Mike on this one. I'm just kind of on the fence about it. I didn't have enough information on it. Previously in March, I was going through a lot of family issues, and so I really didn't have a lot of time to research this particular project or show up at the P&amp;Z meeting, but I was present for the actual council meeting. And, you know, I got to learn a little bit about it there. And, you know, I probably would have chose to table it just because in my personal experience that I had with some family issues, I just didn't really have a lot of information, but I know that we had an overwhelming amount of citizens vote no for that, and they had a lot of really, really good reasons why. And I definitely think that maybe some revisions could have been done and maybe been re-presented to city council. So that's kind of where I stand on that issue.
Before I went to the city council and heard Jackson Shaw speak and all of our citizens speak, I did a little research about what was this North Shore development. I wanted to understand what they would possibly be presenting and what they would be bringing to the council and what the rezoning could be bodied upon. And when I went out, I was very excited, and I got to watch some of the Jackson Shaw videos about the North Shore and what would be coming to light, the promises of an education and medical facility, retail, and other things. It wasn't the vision of a light warehouse or warehouse in that area. So whenever the rezoning came, it was a little bit to my surprise that it would be a rezoning for that larger or warehouse area. Then hearing about from all the citizens and their concerns, I really do feel like Jackson Shaw did a really good job of doing additional testing to help address some of those concerns. They also made three different approaches to the community, helping to pull in the citizens' input. And they had shared during the council meeting that they would be including that in their future build, which is excellent. However, we as citizens have to continue to voice our concerns to them so that they do deliver what they had promised in making, including some of those retail upgrades and things that were wished upon for the other part of the build. As far as what I would support, I agree with the rezoning. We have to be able to allow for the comprehensive plan to be voted upon for rezoning for future things and make sure that our city can grow. And with the proper evaluation of the growth, we have to allow for it.
Thank you. All right. We have just under 30 minutes left, so we're going to change the format slightly. We're going to drop it down to a minute so that we can get through. I've got about four more questions that I really want to get to. So hopefully, we can squeeze those in if you'll work with me. Deb, we're going to start with you in one minute. Given the continued rise in home sales and rental prices, would you support the city of Rowlett taking the initiative to create housing opportunities that are affordable for our essential workers and seniors? If so, could this include more apartments being built?
Oh, you would give me that one. So much to say in so little time. I think that it is certainly vitally important that our essential services workers have a place to live in the city. I also think that we have enough apartments at this point in time. So I would want to take that on a case-by-case basis. I would want to be sure that we were really doing this for the purpose that is being presented in terms of providing this for essential services workers and seniors and those who really, really need it. I'm never going to say, and I've said before, I'm never going to say I'll never vote for this or I'll always vote for this because every issue that the council faces really has to be considered on an individual basis. And this one, more than most, maybe, is going...
Welcome to the Speed Ground. My thoughts on affordable housing are that I believe that it should focus right now on senior living, 55 and older. I believe that that is the largest demographic that will grow over the next 10 years, and there is a huge need for housing in that, and that's where I would see the affordable housing coming from.
And I'm not mimicking you. I need to stretch, too. I most definitely wouldn't have a problem with affordable living for seniors. That's pretty much where I draw the line. Like, I'll go back to what I said a while ago. Before I can actually say how I would vote, I'd need to sit, I'd need to be sitting on the council. I need to see all the facts, all the figures, all the pros and cons, the citizens' input, before I'd make a decision on whether we're going to have more apartments. I do believe that if we're going to follow the comprehensive plan, we need to follow that or we need to modify that plan because I know that there's certain parts of our city that call for multifamily housing, but they're being forced to go through the special use permit process, which I don't think is fair.
Okay, I think if you have looked at my recent interview with Jeff, my position is well-known on this. We need to pause on the multifamily until we catch up on our infrastructure. In my vision for Rowlett, I see areas of urban development and areas of residential development. We're getting there with Sapphire Bay and downtown Main Street. I see the potential for multifamily development in the North Shore as part of a larger development that brings in the commercial and retail base that we need. I've run the numbers. We can't afford to build a lot more right now. We've added 6,000 or better units in the last several years. It's time to pause, let ourselves catch up, and then we can see where we are.
As far as the new developments that are coming in for multifamily, like I said, I think everybody's kind of in agreeance that we've kind of reached our peak at the moment. Our foundation, like our public safety and infrastructure, does need to be updated before we start sustaining more growth in that manner. I am definitely, as a lot of them have also said, for the affordable housing for the seniors on a case-by-case basis and things like that when we actually do need it. But I think we've got enough diversity here in our residential areas as far as multifamily to kind of just take a break and focus more on the foundations here to keep everything going.
So Rowlett currently has 3,000 multifamily units that are 90% occupied, and we're looking to put in about 1,500 units with the Sapphire Bay and 1,300 more units with the North Shore. Now, with some of the North Shore and Sapphire Base, those could be form-based where they'll have retail at the bottom of those multifamily units that will allow for retail and dining and things. So that will be wonderful. And then we do have some additional multifamily that's planned for the living at Beacon Harbor for the senior citizens' living. Anything additional to that, I feel like Rowlett has been tapped out. It would have to be excruciated and looked at as part of the city's needs and truly make sure that it meets the needs of the citizens before we could put it in.
So this is an interesting topic because I stood up in front of city council in 2017 in front of Mayor Gattell at the time, and I listed all the apartment complexes that were either already built, under construction, or planned for the City of Rowlett at that time. And I saw council members' eyes widen because I don't think they had been presented with a count of the number of units that were being built or that were planned. And we are now at that point where we're recognizing all of that. In the past few years, council really has not approved any apartment complexes. And what has resulted from that is just all these developments that were already planned are kind of now, you know, starting to go vertical. That being said, I would have a very difficult time approving apartments in primaries of the city. You know, there are areas perhaps in the North Shore where there's infrastructure that could be well-suited to support some smaller developments. But I suppose this question was really about affordable housing, and so I will reemphasize as far as senior living goes, I think that's the right call, is to get some senior living as well. We need people to be able to retire in place here in the city.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Laura.
Whitney?
Yes, sir.
Rowlett has seen an increase to the homeless population over the past few years. Along with this, there's been an increase to both loitering and panhandling. What are your plans to address these issues for the health, safety, and the future of Rowlett?
There's a couple of things. One, we can't outlaw panhandling entirely. The Supreme Court has already decided that for us that that is a First Amendment right. So what we have is an ordinance on the books that says that aggressive panhandling is illegal. So if they're coming up to your car, or they're bugging you and trying to get money, and you don't want to do that, that's where we can step in and take care of that. One of the things that we're fortunate about was this past budget season, Dallas County was able to give us, that quick? They gave us a grant. Oh, a Thursday, okay, thank you. And in that grant, shame on you, in that grant, we were able to hire an additional police officer and a licensed social worker to be able to complete our team of three that is able to go out and help these homeless folks try to find better places and better services than we have to offer in Rowlett because we virtually have no services here at all. So now my time is up, for real.
Well, the first thing that I will say is I do not believe Rowlett needs a homeless shelter. And so I'll just state that. I do believe it needs to be, in terms of wherever it's aggressively, the panhandling's going on, it needs to be dealt with pretty quickly. I know we've got a homeless problem. People can say it's because of the DART. I don't know if it's all from the DART. The DART's not going to go away. So we're just going to have to find some innovative ways of how we're going to deal with what appears to me a real growing problem of homeless people in and around our city.
Is it seating your 30 seconds? Okay, I don't have an answer for this. I just want to stretch my legs. That was news to me from Whitney. That's a good thing, aggressive panhandling ordinance. I think I've seen that elsewhere and been the victim of aggressive panhandling as well. I really don't have a good answer for this one. I really don't have a good answer for this one. I would have to talk to the police department, find out what they believe can be done. One of the thoughts I had in the recent past about this was that maybe we need to talk to the DART folks about enforcing the ridership fares. I don't know if these folks are riding for free or not. I've never been a big fan of providing volunteer payment for public services. If you're going to collect the money, collect the money from everybody and not just those who are willing to pay. And that's really all I've got on this one. So I'll give my next 30 seconds to my running mate here.
I just get the rollover time. As for this, you know, I know J.J. Jones deals a lot with the homeless and things like that, as well as the mental health around here. And I definitely think that department probably could use a little bit more staff to kind of assist, because I know he is definitely overwhelmed in a lot of the things that he's doing. And he has such a great passion for what he does do. And I'm sure Rebecca Day has talked quite a bit extensively with him. I had the pleasure to have a brief conversation with him for a little bit and learn a little bit about what his day-to-day things are. And I definitely think that we do have a problem, and it does need to get addressed. And I think it needs to start with a little bit more staff and trying to figure out what the source of the problem is, so we can figure out which way to go from here.
So regarding the panhandling issue, yes, I agree with what Stephanie had said about our police department needing the support that they, that, providing the support that they need to be able to handle the situation. If we do get more panhandlers in the city, the first thing that we need to do is try to help those people to get to the resources that will help them. There are other resources in the Dallas surrounding area that can help them, and I, and I believe that that is what our police department is helping them with, too. I've volunteered with our calling downtown Dallas. They do do a pickup for local area Dallas, that you can call their number. If you give them their number, they will come do a van pickup. Now, during COVID, this was very difficult. They weren't able to do a lot of their van pickups. So a lot of those homeless people weren't able to get picked up and come to the shelter. But they provide meals and showers.
So I think there's two questions here, really. There's, there's the homeless population, and then there's the panhandling population. And those two populations are not always the same. As far as the homeless population goes, we are blessed as a community to have some resources, both Life Message and the food pantry called Hope in Hand Food Pantry that's run out of First Christian Church, to provide food to people. And those are very important resources. As far as panhandling goes, I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that question. You know, we as council are tasked with providing vision to, to staff to accomplish things. And in this case, I think the best course of action would really be to task our, our police department and our city staff with coming up with solutions. What can we do as a community to solve this problem? What are surrounding communities doing? Let's, let's take some best practices from what others are doing as opposed to trying to reinvent the wheel. I think that's really our best path forward as far as panhandling goes.
Well, as Jeff already stated, this is really two different problems. And there are laws to address these problems. In addition to the city ordinance that outlaws aggressive panhandling, we also have the new state law that prohibits camping by the, by the homeless, or overnight camping in public areas. So I think the key here is we have to look at what we want here, and we have to consider that this is a problem, not just in Rowlett, but it's a problem that's common throughout the whole United States. And if we look at the large cities, the large urban areas, we can see what happens if you don't control these problems. And that means that we need to nip it in the bud. We need to control the problem while it's small, rather than let it get big. So I think, again, supporting our police department in enforcing the laws that we already have is the key here, and that's it.
All right. Down to our last two questions. And both of these were asked a couple of times, but there, there's a little controversy to them. So I'll just read them. The first one starts with you, Mike. Last, it's not too bad. "Last year's bond election, Proposition B, was a package of certain parks and recreation projects. It was failed to vote through. This was at least partly due to an attempt to install public hike and bike trails in the take-line area around lakeside homes. What is your opinion of building trails in the take-line area behind lakeside homes? And as a follow-up, what priorities for Parks and Rec would you focus on to make up for some of the missed opportunities?"
Wow. That's a lot for one long question. First and foremost, for the, in terms of the trails behind lake homes, I would definitely listen to the homeowners, because I have heard them loud and clear on, on a number of occasions that they do not want trails behind their homes. And you have to, you have to, you have to agree with them to some degree. They, they invested their time, their money, their treasure to build that home, looking across the lake. I probably wouldn't want trails running behind my house as, as either. How do we make up for it? We just have to prioritize. I don't, I have a problem with having another bond issue. And how do we, how do we improve our parks and recreation areas as best we can? Again, I don't have a lot of good details on how that would do it. I do like bonds for, for that, so. But I'm definitely against forcing trails behind people's homes who don't want them.
I have way more than a minute on this. So I was in late 2020, chair of the committee that would be referred to as the Bond Committee. And I can tell you that what was brought to that committee was not putting trails behind people's houses. I learned after the fact that was actually something that was planned out of the 2018 bond, but was never really brought to the surface. While I was working on the prioritization with the rest of the Bond Committee for the various projects that were before us, we were told that the process for trails was to approve a general fund, and I think we were putting $2 million into that. And after that, then, the city staff would work on plans and bring those to the city council for approval. What I learned after the fact was that city staff, while we were doing that prioritization, was receiving emails from concerned citizens about putting trails behind their homes. That was not right.
Quite right. I'll pick up where you left off on that, Brian. A lot of the, the facts were misrepresented or left out to the Bond Committee, also to the city council on some of these things. And I'm not completely against trails. You know, I just don't think a lot of trails should go behind already existing homes. I don't have a problem with them being built behind some developments, such as Canterbury Cove or the vineyards and things like that for little pocket parks. I'm definitely not against that. But I do think that if you purchased a home on the lake with the assumption that you would have the leaseback area, you'd spend money, your own hard-earned money to take care of that, and I think that it should be respected. But I definitely think that this next go-around on the bond, they should definitely try to put forth a little bit more facts and represent it a little bit better, especially given that the, the citizens had a lot of input in that. It just wasn't represented well.
For the, for the 2022 November bond election that we have, the CIP Committee has already been formed. It was just made up of citizens to help put that bond together. And I do hope that with the, the input that they have received from the other, the 2021, May 2021 bond, that they will separate those different pieces so that they can be voted on individually, so that some of the pieces that were lumped into that bond will not get overlooked. One of the biggest things that I was a proponent for that did not go into fruition was the continued buildout of Hereford Park. And that is part of the, the park in Hereford Park that was part of that bond election buildout. I feel like it makes our Main Street. It makes our, our, our small hometown feel with the continuation of Main Street into Hereford. So I don't want to see things like that getting hurt in future bond elections if they're lumped into a big lump sum.
So to answer the question very directly, no, I'm not in favor of putting trails behind people's homes. There are take-line lease agreements that are in place with homeowners, and, and that would essentially be like taking a vehicle that you lease and the government procuring it for a while and saying, "This is ours to use." And I don't believe that's fair at all. In terms of priorities that I would like to see, perhaps alternatives for us to focus on, there's, there's really three. One is maintaining the existing parks and facilities that we have, finalizing some of the, some of the items that we already have bonded and, and need to get completed. Second would be developing some of the undeveloped parks that we have. You know, there's areas within the city where there are undeveloped parks, and it's literally just a field. Let's get some of those developed. Let's pour some money into that area so our, our neighborhoods can celebrate those green spaces. And third would be lake access. I mean, that's, that's a given. We are, we are the city on the lake. We need to improve our lakes' access. One, one public boat ramp really isn't going to cut it. Thank you.
Well, it's true that some, the funding for some of the trails was included in the 2018 bond election, but there were other trails that were planned that would have been funded out of the, the previous 2021 bond election. The point here, which Jeff already alluded to, is that lakefront homeowners had legal contracts with the city to lease those take areas for 40 years. And the city represented to the lakefront homeowners that that contract would give them exclusive use of those trails, other than for city maintenance and, you know, emergency services and such. So the lakefront homeowners protested this because they felt that there was a breach of contract and, and invasion of privacy involved in putting trails behind those homes. Now, as Rebecca said, I think that a big part of the problem was bundling these bond issues. And I think that by giving people the option to vote separately, we could solve that problem.
We have a tremendous park system in Rowlett, and it's one that we should all be very proud of. I do not support putting trails behind homes, especially on the lake. I do support putting trails in other areas of the city, especially in some of the greenways and the undeveloped parks that we have. I feel that interconnectivity within the city is very important, and it is a quality of life issue.
Starting with Brian. Yes, that's right. Last question. This is about diversity, equity, and inclusion. What does diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to you? And can you speak about a time when you've personally advocated for diversity, equity, and inclusion in your community?
What does it mean to me? I was going to look up some quotes from some famous folks like Martin Luther King. To me, it means all of us sitting down at the same table and enjoying each other's company for who we are. It means, you know, sharing our friendship regardless of where we come from and what we look like. In this community, and I think I alluded to this, one of the reasons I really liked raising my kids here was they experienced a much more diverse childhood than I did. I came from an area that was very much less diverse than Rowlett, and I thought they would be better for that experience. I will say that I have been concerned about the division and divisiveness I've seen over the past year in the community. I would like to see that stop. I would like to see people sit down together and talk about what their differences are, rather than talking through the council about what those differences are. Thank you.
I'm going to answer the last half of that question first, as far as how I've been... Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, absolutely. What does it mean to you? And can you speak about a time when you've personally advocated for diversity, equity, and inclusion in your community?
Personally advocated? Right now, I'm kind of advocating for Paddle Point Park. A portion of it is ADA compliant, the other half is not. There's an area on the back half of the park that goes up to Dave's kayak shop that is just a road. So I'm actually running that Heroes on the Water chapter, and that is our home base. We're going to be having a lot of people come down that are in wheelchairs and people of disability, and they can't access Dave's kayak shop. So right now, I think that's kind of a, a big deal. You know, we'd have to have somebody have assistance to get him up to that. And as far as RDEIC, does it say right? RDEIC. You know, I think they have a lot of different things that they're, that they're supporting. And, you know, I, I agree with a lot of their support, but then again, I'm also not painting everybody with one wide brush for something I agree or disagree with. But everybody has their own individual opinions. And I think that, you know, as we sit down at a table, like Brian said, and come together and actually talk about it, we could probably definitely come to an agreement.
So the Rowlett Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and just in general, it means a lot to me. It means respecting everyone and listening to everyone in our community and understanding their needs. It means bringing everybody in on the decision and being non-biased when making decisions. And for me, it means making sure that they're, they have a voice or a listening ear at the table whenever they're not able to even make it. So please vote for me, because I will be supporting the RDEIC.
So diversity, equity, and inclusion is, is three words. And, and from the city's standpoint, the diversity aspect of it is really to recognize that we are different. We do have differences between us. The equity part of it is to ensure that we are treated equitably, that we are treated equally. And the third part of it, inclusion, is to ensure that we include all the members of our community in that process. As council members, we have to govern regardless of that diversity. We have to govern with respect to equitable decisions for all the members of our community. And we have to be sure to include all the members of our community and don't do things that are going to exclude, whether, whether intentionally or inadvertently, exclude members of our community. I won't, I won't say anything that I've personally done, but I will give a shout-out to the Arts and Humanities Commission, and in particular, one member of the Arts and Humanities Commission. Her name is Deborah. And when I first joined the Arts and Humanities Commission, one of the things that we focused on was providing opportunities for special needs art students to submit to a contest. And we created a category, I say "we," I apologize. She basically led the effort, led the charge on creating a category specifically for special needs students so that they could be well-represented at these contests as well. Thank you.
Diversity is such an important element. And in our city, we have a very diverse population. I spent several years traveling all over the world, and I met people from so many different cultures. And it really opened my eyes to how, although we have our differences and our unique characteristics, we also are all human beings who have so many common characteristics. And I think it's really important to recognize that. And as Jeff said, I mean, Jeff really kind of said it all. But diversity, equity, and inclusion aren't just about ethnic background or sexual orientation or, you know, the things that we usually think about, race and, and gender, but also about parts of our population, such as the disabled population. The seniors are a minority group, and I support all of them.
And seniors are an important part of our network. DEI helps our community to be better, helps us to be richer. It is part of the fabric that we're made of in our community, and we embrace that. And that is something that I am very proud of, again, that we've talked about a lot of things today that we're very proud of. And DEI is something that we can all be proud of. We, we have 70, over 73,000 people in this community, and we do great things with them. And DEI is one of them.
Need to stretch again. And I will try to be as fast as possible. Let me explain about giving you this story, what I learned my first week in boot camp. And you're probably thinking, "What does the Marine Corps have to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion?" We had a big burly drill instructor with a lot of colorful language sit up and told us that there's no black people, there's no white people, there's no brown people, there's no Asians, there's no Hispanics. You're all Marines. You're all green. Now, that stuck with me all these years, because what he was really...
Now, that stuck with me all these years because what he was really trying to teach us, it's about who you are, not what you are. Now, I believe if we could get back to that concept, Martin Luther King Jr. said it so eloquently, it's the content of your character, not the color of your skin, or whatever you prefer or whatever your lifestyle is. If we concentrate on who you are and not what you are, that'd go a long way.
All right, well, now I get to stretch my legs a little bit. Let's have a round of applause for all these candidates. Fitting those questions into a minute was not easy, I know. I could see. I'm sorry. But we did it. Mike, if you would, give us a website, social media, anything else you'd like to shout out real quick that can find some of your answers later?
We'd love to. It's mikefor, the number four, rowlett.com. That's my website. You can also find me at mikeforrowlett on my Facebook. It has all my history, all about me, what I believe in, what drives me, what makes me tick. So just go there, or you can email me at info@mikeforrowlett.com.
Thanks, Mike. Brian?
I really should have copyrighted that "for" thing. I did that a few years ago. My website is brianfor, number four, rowlett.com. My email address is brianforrowlett@gmail.com. I will be posting in my blog on my website some additional information about bonding that we talked about a little while ago. One of the things I did was write a lessons learned document following that 2021 bond, something that no one else in the Bond Committee had ever done before. So the next Bond Committee can learn from the things that went well, things that did not go so well for the Bond Committee. And I will post that shortly, and as long with. Carolyn, if you're here, if you're watching at home, I told you I would post something out there about the homestead ideas. I'll get that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie?
You can go to my website at Higgins, the number four. Higginsforrowlett.com. I also have a Facebook page where you can reach out to me and message me on as well, either on my personal or my candidate page. I'm pretty responsive through that, so.
I have both a website and an email address. You can find me at rebecca day, the F-O-R, rowlett.com to learn a little bit about me and my family. And then I also have an email address, rebecca day, number four, the number four, city council at gmail.com.
So Brian, I'll pay you the royalties shortly after the meeting here. But I'm jefffor, number four, rowlett, sorry, jeffforrowlett.com. But I also want to give a shout out to a group of profiles that I did on all the candidates that are here on the stage, except for myself, because I felt it would be weird to interview myself. However, I did a profile on each of these candidates, as well as all the mayoral candidates. And I would encourage you to check those out. It's on a Facebook page called Rowlett Local Election Info. And it's also on my YouTube channel, if you're not a Facebook person. So check those out. It's a chance for each of the candidates to really share their vision for the community, to pour out their hearts to you as voters, and to tell you what they have, you know, in the future for Rowlett. Thank you.
I'm going to stand up like Brian here. And I want to first thank you all for coming out tonight. And you can find out more about me on Facebook. I'm on there, and it's debfor, number four, rowlett, is my candidacy page. And then I have a website that is debshinderrowlett.com, all run together. And that website is, in keeping with my general wordiness, has extensive information about my platform, my positions on different, positions are my positions on different issues that I didn't have time to talk about tonight. And also, I have a blog there that there's a link to it, and I have blogged on many, many, many different city issues. So you can find out much more than you ever wanted to know about me there. If you want to email me, I'm always happy to discuss anything with you. I'm going to give you my real email address or my private email address rather than the campaign one, and that's deb@shinder.net. Really easy to remember if you remember how to spell my last name. So, you know, I'm happy to get together with anybody, to talk with you in person. Just contact me, and I'm always here for you.
My email is lanningforcouncil@gmail. And I appreciate all of you for coming out tonight. I've just checked my phone, and you're not going to get struck by lightning or anything by when you exit the church tonight. Tomorrow night might be a different story, but you're safe for tonight.
Before we wrap up, can we have a round of applause for our moderator this evening?
Thank you. And you can reach me at stevenforrowlett@, no, I'm just kidding. That'd be something. All right, let's, Michael, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or, I don't know where you are. Nope? Okay. All right, well, so voting day is, or excuse me, election day is May 7th, and early voting runs from April 25th to May 3rd. So don't forget to get out and vote and share this video online with your friends. And also Jeff's videos were fantastic. As he said, you can find those on Facebook, and I watched them, they're great. So thanks, everyone, for coming, and have a good night.